Okay, good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call please. I'm sorry, you probably haven't had a chance to get settled in.
Well, yeah.
(laughing)
It's not working.
Okay. Sorry, didn't mean to pile on there, Mike.
Well, come on. Just not happen to click one of the mulch or anything move. Sorry.
You're good. I saw something move. You're making progress now.
Okay. Mrs. Carrier?
Here.
Mrs. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Mazur?
Here.
Mr. Metzman?
Here.
And Mr. Vedder?
Here.
Right, pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome all. Mr. Bassett?
Wait, we're gonna stick with Erica.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Erica?
I'll be quick.
Please.
(laughing)
Please.
I'm here tonight to present an enterprise zone tax evasion for APT manufacturing. It is actually below the threshold that we need to approve. So what I'm here today is for the actual school donation portion, which is within that agreement. So what they're doing is they're adding 25,000 square feet to their existing building. They're gonna be adding 10 new jobs and retaining 82 positions that they currently have. And they're asking for a 10-year term at 70 percent. The school donation portion would be an annual contribution based off of what the actual real property comes in at. But here's an estimate of around $1,700 annually for 10 years. So that's what they're asking for. Once you guys approve and sign, then I'll have the nice one under sign. And then we'll send you back the fully executed enterprise zone agreement. Any questions?
Well, seems pretty straightforward.
Thank you.
You weren't lying.
(laughing)
Short and sweet.
Thank you, Erica.
Thanks.
Great to see industry growing.
Yes.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Mr. Bassett?
Yes.
What do you have for us?
Sorry. Custodial staff's been really busy cleaning the building, top to bottom, inside and out. We've been busy keeping up with all the mowing, weeding. Changed out all 294 picture frames throughout the building for second floors, stairwells.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes.
Painted the football, practice fields, marching band areas throughout the summer here. Working on all the room repair forms from staff. We sanded down all the handrails this year and repainted them all to a new color. They are a different color because in the future we plan on changing the stair tread colors to a little darker color so it doesn't show all the... I know that was one thing Kevin Miller, one of the first things he complained about was, "Why did I pick tan stair treads?" They show every little black mark from his shoes. So it shouldn't match the stair treads in the future. Just haven't been able to get a quote from the company on that yet. We've been trying for a month now, a month and a half. So yeah, I've been working on that. Touched up paint around the inside of the building. All the black tops all been refilled, resealed, and restripped. We blew 80, 85 yards of mulch around the building and inside the courtyard this summer. Working with numerous contractors on running electrical and plumbing through the elementary rooms upstairs, the special ed rooms. And that was all through an ARP ID grant. So there was no money really out of pocket whatsoever for the district. Also moved the video production room to room 134. Added some curtains, some electrical, and the ceiling, and basic control work had to be done by another contractor. All through the... It was all computer controls. We've been running Cat 5 cable around. IT department's had some issues with printers losing connectivity. So we ran down, I ran Cat 5 cable in the library on the elementary side, down by the band room, tied it in the closet. So they're always connected all the time, shouldn't be dropping out. Also running Cat 5 cable to the football field. We added a huddle camera last week, last Friday, two Fridays ago. So they had it for the very first game. And that was all paid for by a lot of different groups, I think, paid for that. But John and I ran all the Cat 5 cable and electrical for that and got that hanging up there. Still got one in the main gym to do for basketball, wrestling. But we have to rent a lift for that one so we can get up against the bleachers. Try and time that out with some athletic banners, some banners that we're gonna be hanging on our light poles. I think Boosters was the one that purchased 10 banners. And they just say Hicksville Schools, five were black or dark gray maybe, with the Hicksville logo on it, and the other five were red. And look really nicer, four foot tall, two foot wide. And we ordered banners, the pole, the brackets for the poles today. So once they come in, we're gonna have the lift ready to go for that. And a couple parking lot lights we need to work on too, and then the lift stall here. So we've been working on that too. Worked with numerous contractors. We were awarded $204,000 and some odd cents for grant money through the... Round four of safety grant money through the state. One of the ones was vape detection, which is about $110,000 project. They have all those installed. We had the training this morning. We're gonna do some tweaking, but we were able to get the list of who gets all the emergency... They're called environmental sensors, but one of the big things is they detect the use of vape devices. Also checks for gunshots, THC, checks for humidity, temperature, all sorts of environmental stuff. Loud noise like a fight. We might have to make some changes, locker rooms for instance. Maybe a basketball game gets over and the team that won's really happy and they're in there hooting and hollering. It could be too loud where it might detect it and send us alarm saying it's too loud in there. There might be a fight or something going on. So we're gonna have to do some tweaking of it. The second one is shooter detection system, which we're about the only school, I think, in the area. Actually, the company that's installing it, it's the first one that they're doing also. They went through a lot of training. They're hoping it all goes well here. And our test, when we do like a simulation of it, goes well. And they're gonna hopefully try to solve it in a lot of other schools in the area too. But that was $82,000 or $84,000 all paid for from a grant. Hopefully they had half a day left of getting eight sensors tied back in. And they should be ready for training, but we gotta tie it into a fire alarm panel, which might not be till the first or second week of September. Also, the third project was ballistic film on some interior glass and the fieldhouse glass, which we had done ballistic film on about all the exterior glass that we thought was appropriate three, four years ago. And they were hoping to have that done before school started. But they run into a snafu down in Georgia when they were doing one that actually their films start peeling off the windows like a week later. And this company's been around for years. They've done the Pentagon, honest to God, they've done the Pentagon. So they said, "We're waiting to make sure we get the right product before we come up to your school." So Wednesday, they power washed the playground today. John and I plan on cutting out some bad spots in the surface on Wednesday. And we have to mix all the rubber pieces together and all the glue together. And we have to pour in the holes and try it all in. So we're planning on doing that on Wednesday. We'll have the playground shut off for one day. It should be good by Thursday. All the fire inspections have been done. Sprinklers, hydrants, risers, extinguishers, kitchen hood. That's all been done and ready to go for the fire marshal. All the fire marshal inspection forms have been updated and ready for him. Also working on getting the building out back. The curb, the barn that Nathan's using turned into a tight-e classroom. And so we've had to do some things, change out all the outlets, GFI's on there. And just different items coming in. Dry erase boards installing in classrooms. Kenny-shaped tables in classrooms, assembling those, putting them together. So it's been pretty busy for the most part all summer long. One item I did wanna report on, I don't know, we've had a lot of rains periodically, some heavy rains. The drive 18's been dry every time. Doesn't matter during the rain, right after the rain, it's been dry. So I think that pipe that they thought was a 1930's collapsed pipe, a clay pipe over by Woolham's house, be the west of it. When they replaced all that to an 18-inch pipe, I think that took care of the problem. So I know you guys had set money aside for that for future in case we had to pay a contractor to reroute it. So right now still working on Wool's Electric. We have a dishwasher that Melissa Crawford was able to get some grant money for, majority of the dishwasher. And that's supposed to ship August 31st. And right now they're scheduled for October 19th and 20th to install a new dishwasher in the kitchen. And so we have to upgrade some of the wiring because a new one takes more wiring, or bigger wiring. So the last item I have was, we're getting to the point, our one plow we've had for many years, it's a 1997, I believe. Massey Ferguson has a five-foot blade on it, has an 800-pound salt spreader on the back. It runs nice, it always starts, it has always started. It's been a good piece of equipment for us, but it's getting really, really rusty. John last winter wanted to step on it. And I had sent pictures to Mike and to Keith, and his foot pretty much went right through the floorboard of it. It's... It's seen it. It doesn't have tons of hours, it's been very reliable. But looking at like Parkview Hospitals and Parkway Schools and Kenton, a lot of different schools, they're all going to a Kubota. They're all 100% hydrostatic or gear-driven, there's no belt. I did talk with, I know I spoke with Mike about it. He asked if I reached out to Bobcat because they're part of the AEPA purchasing co-op. And I talked with them, they actually gave me prices back today too. They recommend the Toolcat like Eden has. Of course, I can buy two Kubotas for the price of a Toolcat. The Toolcat and the Kubota all have heat, air conditioning, a cab, salt spreader, V-plow. Got four of our quotes. Trying to go out of regular quarters, but I don't think they sell as much equipment. And they said they didn't know when or if they would ever get the Kubota in for us. And so they didn't even give an updated price. The last price they gave us was over a year and a half old, I believe, or at least a year old. So we had one out of Fort Wayne that had a Kubota price. The last, the next person that's on their list to get the next one is ordered it, I believe he said, in January. And so, and back in July when I checked with them, the last one, it was like December 7th or something is when the next person online. So he did put her name on the list, but he said, "No guarantees it'd be for this winter." Could be six, seven months possibly. And then the other company, they said, "You should have it by winter." They don't have any in stock. They end up being the lowest price by just a little bit. And the next one, the most local one, they wouldn't even give us an updated price because they said they don't know if they'll ever see it. And then there's one out of Michigan. They have it in stock. We can get it tomorrow for the most part. They said they have all the equipment if we decide to go with them. There's just like less than $1,000 more than the other company. I did check with Bobcat, there's two prices down there. The UV-34 is similar to the Kubota, other than it's belt-driven. They, for that reason, they kinda didn't really recommend it for pulling a lot of heavyweights or pushing a lot of heavyweight. They would lean more towards the Toolcat, which is twice the price of any of the other quotes from the other companies. So I would like to lean towards the Kubota if you guys would be willing to spend the money on something like that. That price does include the salt spreader, V-plow, heat, air conditioning, street legal, turn signals, headlights, everything. So give you some choices.
I know there's been numerous times that Mr. Adams brings his own in from home and uses it for multiple things, to roll the yard and different things that they've done here, right?
Yeah, I had sent that list. Where's that here? Yeah, snow removal will be the number one for me. Rolling the lawns, John always brings his utility vehicle in here. He rolls the yard with the school, the track, the three football fields with his own equipment. He goes around, we have a tank sprayer, 25 gallon, I believe it is. We set it in the back, fill it full of water and round up. And he drives his around the property spraying all the berms to kill all the... Otherwise you're walking around or a little mower pulling it and filling it up all the times. It's a lot quicker to do it with the utility vehicle. Football track could use this to move, especially when it come to track season. If you ever go to a track event, you'll see about every place has like a John Deere gator or something on it. And they haul officials from the 300-meter sprint or the hurdles back to the start line or, you know, back and forth. They're moving hurdles from one area to the other. And right now, all the kids are doing it. They can use it in the summertime, nothing we need to use. Same thing for baseball and softball, dragging their fields. They could be able to use that on it. I know they've had a mower donated a year ago, two years ago. They've had some issues with that running. But we could park it down there and they could use it all the time. Lot of times just drive around the building to... All the landscaping, which is scheduled to be done tomorrow, around the perimeter of the building and the courtyard, trimming all the stuff back. Dirt, filling holes, getting around the track. We have a lot of holes from chipmunks or anything else on the track that we're constantly filling up five-gallon buckets. Justin Davis got holes a few times this year, holes, you know, the 40-yard line on the Junior High Field. We're going around getting dirt, filling five-gallon buckets on the truck and driving them over. We could do all of that with it. Throw weed eater and stuff in the back oven, go around to trim. We pull out the water can and irrigate, you know, the practice football field, the main football field. And just all around all the trees and everything, it'd save a lot of time. Right now, we used to never have to do it, the park used to do it at the track, and things changed. And so now we're in charge of all the trash cans at the track. So after every track meet, we have to go around in the infield, up by the long jump, high jump area, all that stuff. We gotta round up all the trash cans and drag them up along the road. Over by the stone parking lot so the trash people can pick them up the following day. Same thing for after all the football games, we gotta round them all up. And it'd be nice to throw it on the back of the gator and just drive them over there and drop them off because not a lot of fun in the rain or bad weather. So it could be used for a lot of things. So everyone I've talked to, they highly rave about the Kubota. And that's the way I would like to lean towards.
And what happens to the tractor then?
The tractor, I got two places that give me a price, but it's not worth even trading in. I mean, it's worth selling it outright, like gov bids, gov deals. That salt spreader on it's probably, when it was brand new, is probably 3,500 bucks. I know we've had it for quite a few years, but still works great. We put a new motor in it last year. The tractor runs great. It only has 400-some hours, 442 hours, I think, on it. Getting rusty, you do have, I'm not gonna hide anything. You have to stand on the four-wheel drive, two-wheel drive lever to get the other one to go into gear because they're all kinda stuck together. Talked to them, they said you have to separate the whole motor on it. Thousands of dollars to repair it. And trade-in value on it was like $1,000, they said they'd give us. So you make more money off, you know, gov bids or gov deals, I believe.
I'm pretty familiar with the side-by-sides and the prices there. I'm not trying to take advantage of us by any stretch, so I'm in favor of it. But, not cheap, but they work well, they're great for utility.
I think financially, we talked about it, Mike, haven't we? And feel that it's something we can do.
That's all I had for my report, so.
We just would need your blessing on it because it's over the...
Would you go with the one that's in stock? Or would you go with the one that's six or seven months out?
I would go for the one in stock.
Yeah, I would. That'd be the one I'd go with, yeah.
And they gave us a lot of, because he goes, "You're not in our territory." He said, "So we're giving you like every governmental discount, dealer discount we can possibly give you." Because I asked him about the NJPA purchasing program too, and he says, "You're not in our territory." And you have to go with a local one. And the only local ones, I have numerous emails and phone calls to Dave and all them over at Meyer Equipment Company. He said, "Flat out was honest and said, 'We don't know if or when we'd ever get one in.'" So they wouldn't give an updated price.
I'll move there.
I'll second that. Thank you, Eric.
And I... Do you wanna go ahead with the...
Yeah.
Well, yeah, we want you, motion by Jen, second by Eric, to purchase the Kubota.
Yeah, for $35,499.43.
Well, they're taking care of that. Eric?
Yep, I was gonna see if any one of the names of the company. Yeah, it's called Kubota of Jackson.
Kubota of Jackson.
Yep.
Kubota tractor.
The email's kingsequipment.com, but, yep.
Back to the safety equipment that was installed. Was that the two vendors that you had told me last fall? So I would like to say, I got to talk to both vendors at Capital Conference last year about the two sensors, the vape sensor and then...
Yeah, it was Weibel. Weibel did, yeah.
They're both amazing. Like, they went through everything that they do and they were absolutely amazing on what they could do. And just the variety of different things that it told you and just how it connected into our system. So I was really excited he got those names to me last fall. And I could actually go see him and check him out. So awesome safety equipment that we're having installed.
The motion, as I'm reading here, is a motion by Jen Carrier, second by Eric Vedder, to purchase Kubota tractor from Kubota of Jackson in Jackson, Michigan for $34,000, $35,499.43. So no objections, I'll do roll call. Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
And Mr. Metzman?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Feel like riding around in the wintertime, feel free to come out. Keith rode with me before in the truck, he normally gets pretty sick.
I did not.
Everyone that's ever rode with me in the truck always says, after just a few minutes early, he's like, "Can you let me back off?" It's different when you're driving, it has to be because it's...
I've not experienced that, but it's different than what I normally do. So sometimes I like to go out and just ride while he's palling snow. Keep him company.
Yep.
All right, thanks, principal reports. Who'd like to go first?
I can do it this time.
Awesome.
Might as well go down the line, right? So right now, just getting ready for the new school year. The cross-categorical rooms, a lot of work going into those, like Mr. Bassett talked about. We had a grant that allowed us to get some items that are going to give us more opportunities with our program, such as a stove and a refrigerator and countertops. So being able to implement some more life skills for those students is very important to us. And I think these are gonna be very beneficial things that we have in the classroom now. Mrs. Deal is continuing to work on improving her three through sixth grade program. She's going to be implementing some job skills into her classroom. She'll have a coffee cart, and I'm hoping at some point, maybe she can come in and present that to you guys as she gets that going. Mrs. Sell also for our K-82 cross-categorical room. She's doing an amazing job organizing and getting the supplies she needs that are gonna best fit those students in her program. Very excited to see where these two programs lead us. I think this is a great thing that we're doing for the students in our district and beyond if we, you know, have at least that opportunity to provide it to others. But also, we have a lot of, you know, I think that we still are getting a lot of good press out there. A lot of people that are talking good things about our school. And I have all these parents enrolling their students into the school. And they're saying, you know, "I hear you guys do what's best for kids, and you also have good programming for students with needs." And I hear that over and over by all these new parents coming in and how excited they are for their students to be part of our school. With that said, with all these new students, with all these new kiddos coming in, we're trying to provide them with the right personnel, the right programming, the right supports that they need here because we're getting a wide category of people. Good, it's wonderful. And beyond that, I mean, other students are coming in too. We have just a big enrollment this year. So just, it's been busy, just trying to make sure everybody's in the right place and we have the right supports. And I'm just really looking forward to this year. I'm really excited about it, especially with it being my second year. So excited to bring those kiddos in and say hello out of the buses as they come off. And, you know, just look forward to a great year.
Do you guys know the total of new enrollment? I think last time you told me it was 30-something.
It was 30-something last week.
That's...
They're changing daily.
And that's across all four grades? Or, well, I'm sorry.
All 12, 12. It's usually not that much.
No.
So this is new students.
We just got another one today.
Wow.
It's a girl. And I... And if, I don't know which one you got, but I know that I've talked to a parent who I think hasn't filled out the final forms, and that's two more.
Wow. Wow. That's great.
All right, for the high school, we're looking forward to welcoming students and parents into our building for the annual open house, which is this Thursday from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. For high schoolers, it's a time to put things in your locker, walk around, meet teachers, talk to teachers if you'd like. Just please note for the public that the doors will not open until 6:00 p.m. There are many, not many changes in the high school this year, but we have moved two classrooms. The video productions class is now located in room 134, which used to be Mrs. Blue's room. And she moved to the old green screen room, which is room 126. And then just a note about the video productions class, all the equipments ordered that you guys had approved the purchase of and hoping to have it installed soon. And then Mr. Fries and his students will be working on putting together a daily live broadcast, which will be presented during home base period. Mr. Tier and I sat down and met with Mr. Fries. He's excited about doing that, speaking with some other individuals from the area to make that happen. And we're looking forward to making that possible daily.
That equipment is not here yet, right?
Not here yet.
Not in-house.
Correct.
So, yeah, we've been waiting, so.
I wanted to update too, as far as that, that total price for that equipment is just over $50,000, between 15,000 and 52,000. And between 21st century grants from this past year and this current year we're going into, and the Hicksville Foundation, that cost is essentially fully covered. So another project, and I have to come from our general operating funds. And I think people will get creative and work hard and come up with ways to be able to fund awesome opportunities for our students. And this is one of, thanks again to the Hicksville Foundation for their generous donation that really helped.
Thanks for adding that, Mike. That's all I have.
Thanks.
Middle school. First of all, I'm excited too to start my second year. You can hear all the great programs that are beginning and starting and that we're gonna keep rolling with. And we're just really excited. It's been great seeing all the teachers come in throughout the whole district, the whole building, getting their classrooms ready, just getting ready for another great school year. So that's been exciting in August. We have our open house too, obviously that's district-wide. For the middle school students, it's a chance for them to kinda walk their schedules, which I know with middle school students, it's good for them to know exactly where they're going. So that's a great opportunity for them to come in and kinda walk their schedules, meet their teachers, know where all their classrooms are. So we're looking forward to that on Thursday night. And in addition to open house, the middle school's gonna have two orientations on Thursday night as well. Our seventh and eighth grade orientation will be in the elementary gym at 5:30. We ask that parents enter through the main event doors. And this is where we'll discuss certain rules and expectations, our incentive programs, our eighth graders' Washington DC trip, we'll start organizing that with Mr. Clausen. And Mrs. Cunningham, our middle school athletic director, will go over academic eligibility because that's kinda new to some of our seventh graders and how all that works. So a lot of information for our seventh and eighth graders and their parents at 5:30. And then they'll get their schedules and clear out and start going to open house. And then also in the elementary gym, we will have our fifth grade orientation. That'll start at 6 o'clock. Again, we ask that we enter through the main event doors. And fifth grade is the first year of middle school. So basically just covering how different that jump is from fourth to fifth. Now we're on a bell schedule. They'll meet the staff and just get our fifth graders, who will be excited to be middle school students, just accustomed to the new middle school life. So we're excited to see all those students and meet parents and get all that information out and answer any questions that any of those parents have. So hopefully, I know everybody's busy right now, but hopefully parents and students can make time in their busy schedule to get over here, get that information, and meet some of their teachers. So we're excited.
Cool, thanks.
As everyone has stated, I am excited to have the kiddos back. We just need them here so we can just get things rolling. Each year, the elementary decides upon a school theme. This year, our theme is Aces Are Going Places. So I encourage you to walk down those hallways and see the creative bulletin boards, even the updated trophy case in the elementary wing, where we're showcasing our blue ribbon award, celebrating kiddos with pictures, and then utilizing our theme in there as well. This year's incentives are also based on the theme. All students will receive a passport to be collecting stickers throughout the year for meeting like monthly reading goals, principal's math club, following Hicksville essentials, student of the month. Although students can earn individual stickers, we are also going to be looking to provide stickers to classrooms as well for cafeteria expectations. Students can also learn fly high Friday shout-outs, where we're working with Melissa Crawford in the cafeteria. If a kiddo comes down with one of those little notes, they can put it in a bucket. And we're gonna be just pulling names out on Friday and celebrating them in front of all of the other student bodies. And those names will stay in that bucket for nine weeks. Open house. Open house, we actually have open house tomorrow as well for preschool, kindergarten, and we added third grade. Third grade just seems to be such a challenging transition. And so, last year, we added them to that evening, and then I conduct a brief presentation in the elementary gym at five forty-five, and we, we cover, you know, the state testing in the fall, try to squash any rumors of all the kids that are going to be retained, because we've never retained anyone. And then they all move upstairs and get a presentation from the classroom teacher about the, you know, the expectations and homework expectations, and signing up for their communication app. So it's really been, it was, it was really nice last year, so we decided to add that again. So, that's all from the elementary.
Awesome. Sounds like there's a lot of great things in the pipeline, so, cool. Thank you. Eric, you have anything from Ford County?
Yeah, just real brief. So students are back in session, adult programs as well. Actually, adult programs are back this week. And then they need a social worker. So in the years past, they teamed up with Chromatica, they're hoping to find their own internal social worker position that's still being filled. Anybody happen to know anybody? That's all I have.
Don't steal ours.
Yeah. She's awful in this. Thanks. Keith?
Yep. For my report, my summer's been pretty much the same, completing year-end reports, preparing for the school year. No surprises, everything was pretty much normal. Several staff and administrators attended a PD Palooza day at the E.S.C., and Kim Bearden was the speaker there. She's the co-founder of RCA, Ron Clark Academy, where we send all of our new employees, new teacher employees, and she was the guest speaker. What was really cool was when we were finished, we took a group picture of everyone there from Hicksville. What was there, like, over thirty?
Yeah.
There was like over thirty people, there was like two hundred and some people altogether, and there are thirty of them was from Hicksville. It was a huge group. Yeah. In fact, when we all got up there and Kim was up there with us, everybody's turned like, what's going on? What are all those people doing up there? So it's pretty impressive. I like to see in that. Of course, Kim knows us because we've been there so many times, so she was the person of, of so many Hicksville people being there, as well as other people from other districts. From there, my administrative team and I left for our annual retreat that I put together each year. We spent a couple of long evenings and very full day preparing for the coming school year at a time for us to get together and discuss professional development, line that up, and all the other goals and activities and stuff that we get in place so that our year gets kicked off smoother as the administrators. We also held our new teacher orientation day. It was a full day, overloading the minds of our new employees. Thankfully though, we have handouts from each person that speaks that they can refer to over the coming weeks to help get them going as our new ACES members. I completed the three-day book park portion of my bus recertification.
Yay.
I still need to drive, and I got a ninety-six on the test, just so you know.
Good job. Way to go.
There you go. I still need to drive and pass that portion of the recertification process, and I will do that because as, like any district, we're short of bus drivers, and so I thought I'd do that again, and people see me drive, and I'm the last person. Otherwise, they wouldn't get home. Like all other, and my, 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 just so you know, my certification expires in November, so I'll be done by then, and everything should be good. Like all schools, we are short bus drivers. We still need an afternoon driver for one route, but thankfully, we have someone who is doing training right now that I think will take that spot. And then they would also be eligible to sub at different times too, which would be really helpful. And we could always use more subs if anyone out there is interested in getting their bus license to do that. And people sometimes are fearful of that, and it really is not hard. It's, it's, it's easy, our district's small, and the kids are great, the kids on the bus, and if they're not, I kick them off. So, it's, they're great kids. So, yeah, it's, it's not as bad as some people think, so if you're interested out there, anybody, we would love to have you. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Keith. Okay. I need a motion for me, minutes and financials, please.
I'll move. I'll second.
Thanks, Steph. Thanks, Minda. Minutes and, minutes from the regular board meeting on June nineteen, twenty twenty-three, treasurer's consent agenda items, cash reconciliation as of July thirty-one, twenty twenty-three, financial statements for June and July twenty twenty-three, approve amended official certificate of estimated resources for fiscal year twenty twenty-four as presented, total general fund resources of sixteen million, six hundred and eighty-six thousand, three hundred and nine dollars and seventy-one cents, and total resources for all funds of twenty-one million, four hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars and eighty-eight cents. Approved fiscal year twenty twenty-four amended temporary appropriations as presented, total general fund appropriations of ten million, eight hundred and fifty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirty-six cents, and total appropriations for all funds of thirteen million, three hundred and five thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars and forty-four cents. Approved certificate for the total amount from all sources available for expenditures and balances as of July one, twenty twenty-three, general fund total amount available plus balances of sixteen million, six hundred and eighty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and forty-three cents, and all funds total amount available plus balances of twenty-one million, two hundred and eighty thousand, one hundred and six dollars and sixty-five Accept the following donations, one thousand dollars from Hicksville Eagles for Athletic Department. Any commentary, Mike, on any of that?
Well, yeah, a little bit. One of the things, not necessary that's on there, but one it added our second quarter of two thousand twenty-three, school district income tax receipts were, were down one point one, one point one-five percent from last year in the same quarter. That was about ten thousand dollars. Fortunately, at least, we got to allow that back as interest income from those monies were up about six to seven thousand dollars. A little slowing there on, on the school income tax collections with, with the tax reports is where it was. However, employer withholdings were up about eight point three percent. So they're all set there, but overall, there was a slight decrease in our school district income tax. We'll see where, obviously, where that goes in the future. Also, we did talk about a little bit twenty-first century grant, and we've used some of those funds. That is a, should be a five-year grant. It's renewable annually, but it's, it's primarily, as long as you are doing the program and you apply, it gets renewed. We are entering our third year. The first three years of the program, we get two hundred thousand dollars a year. It's my understanding, the fourth year, we'll get a hundred thousand, and the fifth year will be fifty thousand. So total seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars over the five-year period. And it sounds like it's been a great program. Sounds like the summer's been a success. So, the program starts sometime, what, September, October, and then ends in April or so, after school stuff, before school also. And anyways, it sounds like it's been a real good success, and these funds have helped us in numerous ways. They've also helped us with the Ron Clark Academy to pay for those expenses. And of course, as mentioned earlier, the multimedia room, paying for a great deal of equipment there, among other things.
Okay. I noticed, I forget what page it's on, but the Hill and Dale Farms said received five thousand dollars. Is that their kind of gift because of the tax abatement?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. So that's the first year of what would be about ten, so, on that one.
Thanks for pointing that out. I missed that. Okay. Roll call, please.
All right, Mr. President. Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mr. Mathen?
Yes. Motion carries five to zero. Another motion, please.
I'll move. I'll second.
Thanks, Eric. Thanks, Jen. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Jennifer Bennett, co-assistant athletic director. Brittany Carpenter, co-freshman class advisor. David Moore, co-freshman class advisor. Recommend to approve the following as substitute teachers for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Gail Countryman, Reva Kemperer, Jackie Underwood, Cindy Sprenn, Jeffrey Strata.
And Mr. Fries, who will be our athletic directors?
It's on the addendum. Let me get to that.
It's, I think, the last page.
Thanks, Jen.
That's why it took me, that's why I hesitated a second when I was reading, reading that. Roll call, please.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
And Mr. Mathen?
Yes. Motion carries five to zero. Another motion, please.
I'll second.
Thanks, Minda. Thanks, Steph. Recommend issuing a one-year limited contract to Hope Snyder as paraprofessional with zero years' experience for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Recommend to approve Jacob Bradbury as a classified substitute for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Megan Cover, cheerleading assistant. Brad Ory, mini-ACES football coach, fifty percent. Michael Ritchie, mini-ACES football coach, fifty percent. Amanda Ridgway, co-sophomore class advisor. Tristan Scranton, assistant wrestling coach. Travis Spitnell, assistant football coach. Riley Whatz, Whitzel? Whitzel? Cheerleader advisor, grades nine through twelve.
Okay, so paraprofessionals. Are those like title people? Are they student helpers? What are paraprofessionals?
They're people that are, that will help out our students that need additional support.
So individual students?
It's going to be groups, and the, 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 um, extra.
I am going to tell you that you have a good one. She is from, patient, Hope Snyder.
Okay.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mr. Mathen?
Yes. Motion carries five to zero. Another motion, please.
I'm going.
Thanks, Jen. Thanks, Steph. Recommend to approve an agreement between Hicksville Exempted Village Schools and the Defiance County Board of DD, Good Samaritan School. Recommend to approve a mentor program service agreement with Northwest Ohio Educational Service Center for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Recommend to approve the education option program agreement administered by the Wood County Education Service Center for the Wood County Juvenile Detention Center, the Juvenile Residential Center of Northwest Ohio for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Amount of service to be eighty-five dollars per student per day for students assigned to JDC, ninety dollars per student per day for students assigned to JRC. Recommend to approve a payment in lieu of transportation agreement between Hicksville Exempted Village Schools and Shannon Stolver for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Anybody have any questions or comments about any of that? Okay. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mr. Mathen?
Yes. Motion carries five to zero. And another motion, please.
I'll move.
Thanks, Minda.
I'll second.
Thanks, Eric. Recommend to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four bus routes and designate authority to the superintendent to designate or relocate, relocate subsequent school bus stops. Recommend to approve the in-state and out-of-state tuition rates for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Mathen?
Yes. Motion carries five to zero. And another motion, please.
I'll move.
Thanks, Eric. Eric, are you going to be the lucky one for this?
Yes, I will be.
Okay.
Thank you.
Recommend to a prevaric voter as delegate to the twenty twenty-three OSBA Annual Capitol Conference.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thanks.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Mathen?
Yes. Motion carries five to zero. And another motion. Thanks, Steph.
I'll second.
Did.
Don't she need a second for it? Oh, sorry. Did something?
Oh, I thought, did.
I did.
Okay. All right. And, yeah. I just hadn't gotten, sorry. Thanks, Minda.
So who's?
But we don't have an alternate.
You can get me down.
Okay, Jen.
I might be able to go.
Okay. Recommend to approve Jen Carrier as alternate delegate to the twenty twenty-three OSBA Annual Capitol Conference. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mr. Mathen?
Yes. Motion carries five to zero.
And if something comes up and you can't make it, it's not the end of the world. There's some schools that don't have people there, so, but I will get you guys, do you register them, Mike?
Uh, I can get them.
Do we do that, or?
Yeah.
And then we wait for a notification for the room, which is wrong with the eyes going. But we'll try to get you close.
Typically, I need a signature for each of you. However, I think they changed that electronically this year.
Okay.
So I, we'll have to see how that plays out. I haven't looked into it too much because we haven't gotten to the area.
Okay. Do we have any old business?
Do we do the addendums?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just didn't scroll down far enough.
Okay.
Okay. I need a motion for the addendum, please. Thanks, Minda.
I'll second.
Thanks, Jen. Recommend to rescind the following supplemental contract for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Jennifer Bennett, co-assistant athletic director. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contract for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Jennifer Bennett, assistant athletic director. Recommend to approve Austin Rinallet as a certified substitute for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year.
True question. Okay.
Okay, so who, who will be our athletic director?
Jennifer Bennett. It was co with Robin Chamberlain, but Robin doesn't want to do it, so it's just going to be Jennifer.
So this is a really assistant? And is it not assistant?
Well, it's.
She's the middle school.
She's the middle school athletic director. Jeff Hott and Paul Overmeyer still.
Why does it say assistant, though? I think it's the question.
Do we know? Just the way it's pronounced.
Because it used to.
Athletic directors and then the middle school ones.
Would be in this.
It used to say middle school.
I don't know.
Okay. So, she's the middle school.
Whether it says assistant or what?
Middle school.
It's middle school.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mr. Methben?
Yes. Motion carries five to zero. And another motion, please.
I'll move.
Thanks, Eric. Thanks, Jen. Recommend issuing a one-year limited contract to Kaylee Reed as paraprofessional with zero years' experience for the 2023-2024 school year pending certification. Recommend issuing a one-year limited contract to Jasmine Walters as paraprofessional with zero years' experience for the 2023-2024 school year pending certification. Recommend to rescind the following supplemental contracts for the 2023-2024 school year. Megan Coover, cheerleading assistant. Riley Whitzel, cheerleading advisor, grades nine through 12. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for the 2023-2024 school year. Megan Coover, cheerleading advisor, grades nine through 12. Megan Coover, cheerleading assistant, grades nine through 12. Trista Franklin, cheerleading advisor, grades nine through 12, as well as cheerleading assistant, grades nine through 12. Riley Whitzel, cheerleading advisor, grades nine through 12, and cheerleading assistant, grades nine through 12.
That is confusing.
It is.
Yeah. If they want her at the end, they're going to split it up. Yeah, they're going to team do it. So, that's why, yeah.
So, I'm going to go back to the paraprofessionals. So, is this just because, the paraprofessionals, is it just because we have so many new people coming in, and this is, we're doing like a year-by-year, like as we need it?
Year-by-year. Yeah. So, kind of talked about the high school. The high school, we noticed last year, there's just a lot of need. Our, you know, we just, there's things that, it was overwhelming for the intervention specialists and some of the teachers. This gives those students a lot of reteach, a lot of support for testing, extended time, all those things that, should we document, and we call a person in there to give those supports, especially with our new seals and everything that these students have to earn. This just allows us to make sure that we're doing our best to get those students those seals. The ones, the other two that we're looking at, we have a student here that needs a lot of support. So, one of those people will be a one-on-one paraprofessional due to all the needs of that student and paperwork and all that stuff that goes with her. Then, the other one, we have a lot of needs coming in with the new enrollment. So, yes, that's kind of, to answer your question, just the needs of those.
So, it's very similar, like we do the title.
Yes, yes. And it is year-by-year.
Financially, what we have, we do it year-by-year, even though it might be the same person every year, it's just contract wise, we're doing it one year by year, one year based on need.
Right.
How many title people do we have?
Two.
Well, we have Jamie.
Right.
And then two more.
But title is different because they're served by, and then these guys are just classified.
Right. I was just comparing the, my initial contract.
Anybody that was listening that didn't understand.
I can tell you that, so Smith and I work together to creatively put these kids into classes where they can be used for model needs rather than.
And with us having a high number of sped kids, like I can talk about it from the middle school perspective, you have to have the 50% rule to covered, where you have to have just as many or more regular aid kids in that class. So, when there's, when those sped kids are kind of split up, it's nice to have those aids to be able to go cover those other intervention students as well. So, it kind of covers us everywhere and just gives every student that needs support that support.
Gotcha. I'll throw in my two cents for high school, too. Because it did bring to mind, I was very excited when we got Mr. Countryman to say, yeah, we'll take it to the board for a paraprofessional for the high school because.
They had to work at it.
One thing that we offer in the high school are tutoring periods for IEP students, but we also wanted to do more co-teaching with our intervention specialists and really utilize them the best we could. So, by having a paraprofessional, she can address some of those student needs, but then also can cover some tutoring periods, offer that one-on-one help with IEP students, and it frees up periods for our intervention specialists to actually go in the classroom and truly co-teach. So, I feel like that's a lot better use of our two intervention specialists in the high school rather than having them cover tutoring periods.
And it makes those tutoring classes smaller, so you can help those students more.
Thanks for asking that question.
Yeah.
No, that was, it was a great explanation, too. Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Methben?
Yes. Motion carries five to zero. And another motion, please.
I'll move.
Thanks, Jen.
I'll second.
Thanks, Steph. Recommend to approve the school donation agreement between the Board of County Commissioners of Defiance County, Hicksville Exempted Village Schools, and APT Manufacturing Solutions for 10 years at 10% of the annual real property tax savings.
This is what Erica covered.
And, yeah, that was what Erica covered at the beginning of the meeting.
I just want to say again how awesome I think APT is and their program and what we do with, especially even with the high school students in that program. It's just absolutely amazing. So, I'm just grateful.
Me, too.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mr. Methben?
Yes. Motion carries five to zero. That should be the end of the addendum, right?
That's correct.
Okay. We'll be going into executive session.
We got to go back to old business.
Oh, old business. Yeah, that's right. Trying, trying to get Keith out of here so we can get to that.
I'm not going to make, I can tell you, but my, maybe my admin too.
Old business.
So, we thought, Mike and I have had lots of conversations, and we've talked to you guys as well about new bus. We haven't had one for like three years. We were doing really well at keeping that updated, and we don't really want to get behind. The cost has escalated a lot, like they're up like 20-some thousand at least, 30-some.
About, well, we're getting costs in the neighborhood of about $130,000, where our last bus was about 95 several years ago. Now, the prices that I've seen so far, it could fluctuate depending on what we had, that they didn't already have, or if something's taken out of it. So, but I'm going to guess we're going to be in that neighborhood.
Bus line.
I think it's $205,000. Let's see.
We've been putting money in that.
Fifty-eight.
We thought, when Mike and I talked today, too, we thought maybe we ought to, we were putting 50,000, and we thought maybe we should start putting 65, I think is what you're up there, Mike.
Yeah, I was thinking, yeah, we've been putting that in at the end of the year, and it's been 50,000 a year now for a number of years. I guess in this book, I'm seeing $156,000 there.
Is that what I thought?
Yes. So, I think, yeah, with the cost inflation, with bus pricing, I'll look to probably think about 65,000 at the end of this year. We do have enough to cover a bus. Now, it sounds like it could be out as much as about a year, so we actually may have our transfer funds before we even get a chance to receive that bus.
I think we should hurry up and order one.
Yes. That's why we brought it up.
Yeah.
And then, just so you know, we add cameras to the inside, and then we've also started adding them to the arms as well, a good safety feature and needed. And it's been utilized a lot with discipline issues, so.
So, we'll go a little big into it, get with our representative for that, and we'll be bringing something to you in the near future.
Other item, well, it's not old business, it would have been on a discussion, would be in the ATV, but Eric already covered that, so.
Just a, just a plug for the Hicksville School Foundation. If you are appreciative of what they do, you could show up at their headquarters. Remember, I'm a.
What's the date?
Dual piano.
Yes, the dual piano.
It was a lot of fun.
It was. It was a lot of fun.
I'll have to check my email, but it is the middle of the month.
November.
Is it the 18th? Huber again?
No, Catholic Church.
Okay, okay.
Because the Knights of Columbus from Catholic Church have allowed us to use their umbrella to get the visa license.
Okay.
So, it is an adult mission.
I believe it's the 17th. Would that be correct?
Yeah.
No, no, 18th. It's a Saturday night.
It's the 18th because it's a Saturday.
Yeah, the 18th.
Yes. Yeah, it is a Saturday night, and then tickets, as soon as they get printed by the Ministry of Defense.
Yeah, the foundation has consistently provided funding for various programs that we've had over the years, so they come through time after time.
No guests? So, we'll be going into executive session at 6:35. And we'll be meeting again at our regular time next month.
September 18.
Same time, same location. Need a motion to go into executive session.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Thanks, Jen. Thanks, Minda. And we'll be going in for number one.
Number one.[1736.03]